All right, can you think of like open the meeting for the board of trustees for March eleventh, twenty twenty five, if there's any please rise and join me to the flag of allegiance. But one is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart. Is that good? Start with that, uh, just like the ad for a moment asylum for ex trustee Joan Gassal who passed away. Thank you. All right, let's start. We have to start with the approval of minutes from first of January twenty first, twenty twenty four. Can I make it a motion to approve?
Can I make a motion?
All in favor? Uh, all in favor? All in favor? Three and one. All right, and now we need to, I'm sorry, is there an extension because of, uh? All right, now we need the approval of minutes from our February eleventh, twenty twenty five meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Item two, approval of what?
We approve work number zero three one one two five and amount three hundred twenty eight thousand, eight hundred seventy dollars and seventeen cents. The bulk of this is only health insurance of about ninety six thousand. And then some construction charges together.
Anybody have a second? All in favor? All right, performance reports, uh, chief early when we start.
Good evening, mayor report. For the month of February, there was a total of one hundred and six summers issued. Three hundred eighty one incident reports were obtained, seventy seven of those were in grand booths in the vein of four or five. The PTS of place of moral service grant money is now being used. That's we use that in spring and summer. That's where we put additional patrol on weekends. Uh, using the grant money to give more time to officers and focus on any issues that rest in frame to us. Speeding, bus complete starts at nine W. We don't actually patrol out of the PTS money. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's Tommy here? Right, chief?
Evening, board. On the month of February, the current fire response to twelve twenty one emergencies. Uh, and we finally eleven being in mass related. Only year we're at sixty five calls and thirty five fire, thirty one EMS or other. Um, one day, one day, men, the guys yesterday for the fire that goes down in Paradise. Um, who was in three minutes and a soccer field, a stunt, a spray from the dryer. First one coming to my house, um, the best social, the guy's training. Went and helped me, but they're not coming out of police department, making every clear, close down them quickly. Some emergency vehicles, love operations on work on the economy as a body. And lastly, um, this is my last meeting as chief of the current fire department. When it turned this up, um, been unusual for six years now. So I hope this is not the last two being chief of apartment. My thank the village board for working hard for us, um, anything they ever needed. Whether it was planned or unplanned, we gave it a splendid, new rest of the sound. That's one thing you guys were always supporting us with, um, training.
Thank you so much. All right, uh, Charlie, do you have?
All right. And before I could speak on a couple items. Okay, okay. Uh, first, uh, the park is doing more as well. We're doing all the inspections. That's one. The building parks is very busy. You'll see that in the money budget before the revenue streams. For over about a hundred thousand to date on revenue above what was projected. So it's a good year. We're very, very busy and thought I'd like to speak on one of the projects up there.
Some projects are running well. One issue that came up and I just wanted to inform the board if we need a little more oversight. And I caught it, I think before it was the decision was made. During the construction project, sometimes extras come on. And the email was as follows, as per hour conversation. He didn't say we conversate. This is to the discipline contractor doing the playground job. From as per hour conversation attached to the extra to do some additional grading work. My initial response to the email was, oh, it's in the budget. I don't care. And then I looked at it. I said, wait a second, it's not part. And then my second idea was, was this part of the project? No. Okay, then I looked in into it more closely and it was the, if you're familiar with the park, we are installing a handicap sidewalk from the parking lot to the playground. So now there is a space between that sidewalk and the basket walk. Roughly thirty feet wide and a hundred feet long. And it's mostly grass with a couple of slight indentations in the grass. So the extra to smooth that out and prep and plant grass seed was seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. I said, wait a second, it seems like an awful lot of money. They're very long and it is a prevailing wage job, so we have to pay ridiculous amount for labor. But I decided to call the head of our DPW, Tom. And I said, Tom, what would it cost to get a couple of yards of topsoil? And so many pounds of grass seed and your guys could break it out, right? He said, sure. He said, I can get an entire truck of topsoil for four hundred dollars. And I can get a bag of seed for fifty bucks. So four hundred dollars and fifty dollars of material. And the guys work for you anyway, but if you even a lot get time for two guys, three hours spreading it, I'm sure it would be less than a thousand dollars. So the point I'm making is when you have these projects, you just can't go crazy spending. I know it was not approved. I don't believe it was approved. I don't know. Because it's myself, Charlie, Dan were all involved in it and Sylvia were all involved in it. So someone had a conversation with the contractor and said, give us a price for that. And I don't know if you thought, eh, nobody's really gonna look at it and it'll slide through. So we have to be a little more diligent looking at stuff. That's, I, that's only the projects I'm involved in. I can't look at the projects I'm not involved in. Maybe things like this happen also, but I think it's a bad practice to get into them. So I, I would suggest like in other towns, uh, that is always a double approval. That it's gonna be a change with two members, myself, Charlie, Dan, Sylvia, Jennifer, Bruce, anybody. Two members of the village have to look at it and approve it. So one person doesn't approve it, not realizing it's very problem.
Uh, okay, so this is, so this was a change order for the community center project to offer?
An extra, yeah, an extra, uh, to do some additional order. But I think it was not. It was not, it was not approved. It was an email to approve it, and I think that we squashed it in time.
So it wasn't worked without that?
No. Yeah, we got to the time. And the second capacity on here is we're done. This is our annual MS four report. If anyone cares, uh, MS four is our obligation to New York State to make sure we're not, for lack of a better term, discharging, doing illicit discharge into the Sparkville Creek and Hudson River. There's two bodies that we discharged into on the state list. We are required by the state to offer up our annual report and our, uh, procedures to the public for public comment, and it's on the agenda for this meeting. We don't need to make any statements about it. We just have to answer questions if the public has any comments on it. It's going well. It's very difficult. Just to give you a background today, the DPC does seminars twice a month. We do a Rockland seminar once a month. We have hired, and when I say we, Rockland County formed a consortium of all villages and towns. And as a group, we hired Cornell Cooperative Extension. We have several full-time people. This is all they do is to look into the changing regulations. These regulations sometimes change with people. And we're trying to get this together. Other municipalities have actually full-time people that's all we do. One or two people just to do MS four. It's borderline crazy. It's a good concept. Keep it water clean. We're making sure we're not dumping bad stuff into the waterways. But at the, at the rate they, uh, they put this on us without Cornell Quack that we can never do it. If they did, and we only pay, it's twenty five hundred dollars a year. I think overall we pay about two hundred thousand, something like that, the entire county. But they're invaluable. Without them, there's no way we can do it. You need one or two full-time just to do that ass. That's it.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, item four, old business. Jennifer, do you have any?
No, no old business.
Anybody? Okay, item five, new business.
Uh, for new business, the only thing I have is a notice from the civic association for the Bob Samuels summer concerts. Uh, they just gave us the date. So, uh, June nineteenth, July tenth, July twenty fourth, August fourteenth and August twenty eighth are the dates. That's all I have.
Does one of the public comment? Chief going Bradley, uh? What's that? Well, this is regular color time first and then this one. Okay, first we have Nick, Nick Mayhaj. Come up with the nominee, please. Uh, state your, uh, name and address, please.
Um, Nick Mayhaj?
Mayhaj, so.
I don't deal with the Piermont, along with my brother and my daughter. I didn't write anything here. I didn't write anything down to tell two guys, but I just wanted to bring up a huge concern for us. As the owners of a hundred seventeen families on nine W. Uh, you guys shut down or a smoke shop was shut down. I don't know if I'll call it a smoke shop. I call it a drug shop. That they're selling drugs out of the store. Their crimes are real to begin. Now, the Piermont police did great in doing their work and getting it shut down, analyzing our crimes are real to here. I don't know why nothing's happened between that point and this point where you can change some sort of special zoning. Do not let them open up a drugstore. We have a lot of kids up in there. It's affecting our business. And, you know, all things considered, I don't think you guys would take this a little bit more seriously. Considering that what they're doing there. And us as landlords, investors in the town, I literally live here as well. So I think it's, it would be a great idea to not allow this. I know it might be a little bit difficult for you guys to do this. I'm sure there's a way around it. Uh, there's towns like Bronxville that won't put up the McDonald's open in their town unless it meets X and X Y, X and Y criteria. Which I'm sure you guys would like the smoke shop or a gun shop near to your house. So I'm talking about a hundred and seventeen families of children that they're seeing drug deals, getting beaten by across the street. So I'll come here every meeting until something gets done and I'll bring a hundred and seventeen families if I have to. So until something gets done, you're gonna see my face. That's all I got to say.
Jeff, what is?
Jeff, forty five point one, Gary. I think a lot of the public is somewhat confused with regard to what needs to be included with the comprehensive plan in order for the village to qualify uh, timely for the hundred fifty thousand dollar grant. That's hopefully going to pay for a lot of the work that was done on the comprehensive plan. And I'm asking the court for some clarity. I don't have to belabor the fact that you know how everybody, a large section of our public feels about the CVM and the semblance of the CVM. That's not what I'm gonna ask about. What I'm gonna ask about, because I know you're trying to incorporate zoning into the comprehensive plan. Is it your position, is your understanding that you need to include in a comprehensive plan in order to qualify for the grant, I think by June first or whatever? You have to have adopted zoning provisions. I'm going to advise the board that this is a, this is a comment session. It's not a question and answer session. Uh, we invite the board to take, you know, any questions or their advisement, but, uh, just keep in mind.
I've got to answer anyways.
But the public is confused. We're hearing different conflicting things. So if we're biased, if the board shouldn't answer that request, it seems like a reasonable request and something the public should know. The public should understand that that's what their councilors does advise the village board.
Kate McKay?
Let's bring the name of that. Thank you. Ruth Reash Street. Um, I guess, I guess a little bit of the back to Jeff's comment. I, I've been here before and kind of asking for the same thing, but I'd like to ask again that the village board made a commitment to posting documentation on the website about items that are being considered on the technical committees so that the public can be aware of and informed about different topics that are coming up as well as business that came down. Now the planning and the board committees and, and other adjacent committees, right? Comprehensive planning committee, there's big gaps in the village website where there's no documentation posted. And it's really hard to be informed and engaged if nobody has any information to work on.
Next is Stark.
Hey, good evening. Um, I would also like to address, oh, sorry, I want to start gate fifteen Piermont Avenue. I would also like to address the ongoing issue of the village not providing relevant documents to the public in a timely and accessible manner. For example, this evening, we have a public hearing on stormwater management plan and MS four and report. But there are no easily accessible links to the relevant documents on the website. How can the public make meaningful comments and be part of the process when the relevant documents are not accessible? There is currently a concerning, um, construction site at Route nine W, I believe number seven six six, seven six eight. Aside from a small buffer of trees along Route nine W, this entire site has been clear cut given the ongoing problems with erosion and flooding experienced downhill from Route nine W. This amount of clear cutting appears problematic. Is this degree of clear cutting permitted by village code specifically that by our tree protection and environmentally sensitive site ordinances? It is, I think we need to review and revise our code, especially when our draft comprehensive plan repeatedly calls for the protection of wooded slopes and repeatedly bemoans the ongoing roadside flooding and erosion. Furthermore, there are currently some cables on the site, but previously and before a significant rain event, there is nothing. Circling back to the lack of written documents available to the public in a time and fashion that have evolutions of zoning legislation to be passed concurrently with the comprehensive plan for months now. And the public has seen no drafts of any such zoning amendments. This is deeply concerning as this village board's previous attempts at changes to our zoning code have been met with widespread opposition from the community. Of concern, the draft comprehensive plan suggests that zoning in downtown should be consistent with its current bill of form. This is the exact language used in justifying the CPM zone. The public challenged this justification at the December public workshop, pointing out that the village's existing historic architecture should instead be protected within historic district overlay zone. There is significant aesthetic and functional difference between a historic building of a certain size and setback and new construction of a certain size and setback. The village should ultimately focus on how to preserve and protect our historic buildings, which define our popular village center and Main Street, which many residents see as the heart of our community. Following on these thoughts, I would like to request that the village trustees not pass any major zoning amendments that would alter the fabric of our village, especially any zoning amendments pertaining to our historic downtown concurrently into comprehensive plan. It seems like enough of the task at its time for the village trustees and community to pass a strong comprehensive plan, which we can all feel comfortable and proud. Any major changes in zoning should be tackled after the comprehensive plan is passed with the full focus and attention of the village board, man, we sports and community. Is that, I have a question.
Thank you. Janice Young?
Something for you. Janice, I'm telling you, I, uh, I'm not really prepared to any, so I just wanna, I do wanna say I recognize that there's been a lot of animosity and there's been a lot of ugliness, you know, on Facebook, on social media, et cetera. I'm not happy with that kind of stuff either. I think most of us don't like that, so I just wanna make that clear. I only got involved in this stuff because what was gonna be built across the street. Because I lived in the patch and that's a, it's a flood zone. And there's a lot of cars that park there and my yard is right there. Bring some security concerns because it's right against my property. My son is young. Through that, though, it's been kind of a learning progression for me. I've learned more about this kind of stuff, local government in the last few months than I think I've learned in my life. Uh, the CVM zone, I appreciate how much work everybody here has been putting into that. I really do. I saw on the last one. You know, there's a nod to putting up trees. Um, and I appreciate that because, uh, pollution is a real thing. Uh, we need to concern ourselves with that, but at the same time, then I look at nine W and all a bunch of trees are, have been raised and I wonder when it says, put up some trees, plant some trees, how many trees? How many trees per person? Uh, how many trees per car that we are now inviting in? It would be really nice if the board would just consider. I understand how much power you guys have, but as a community, it'd be really nice if we as a community could vote on whether, you know, what passes and what doesn't, because it's going to affect everybody. Even walking on the pier the other, you know, the last several weeks, I pulled a golf net out of the river. Uh, balloons, this, that, the other thing. We're inviting so many more people. We're gonna have more, more pollution, more trash going into the river. There's gonna be, you know, issues with sewage. It's, it's, it's a big deal. And I really hope that you consider, just again, as we are all neighbors here, let us vote. Let us have some sit down, real long sit downs, maybe for a few days, maybe a few versions. And I know you guys have been working on it and I'm sure that it's not something you wanna hear, but I honestly didn't even know, but um, I just moved here a few years ago and then I saw something on Facebook about the thing across the street and it's a, it's a learning curve. So bear with me, but I do hope you would consider hearing our voices in terms of ballots. Okay, thank you so much. Have a good night.
Okay, thank you. Let's get on to item number seven. Seven o'clock, a public hearing, stormwater management plan and MS four annual report. I believe that's going to be given by. All right, we're okay. Uh, can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, so the annual, uh, the, uh, the annual report is due April first. I did an initial draft as in accordance with the DPC, so you, you need to do a draft and have it on display. There is a book in, in town which has all the information in it and it's, uh, it's available for public, uh, review. It has last year's report. It has all the notice of intentions. It has, uh, what we're doing to reduce illicit, uh, discharge, which is the main concern. For lack of a better situation, we're the worst situation. Everybody dumps into us. We dump into nobody. We dump into Hudson and Sparkville Creek. We dump into nobody. So, uh, there are two main parts the DPC are concerned with. They're concerned with, uh, uh, two different discharge points. We only have one. We only dis, we only discharge. There, we don't have any, what they call interconnections. And interconnections, when you discharge into another municipality, we don't discharge to anyone else. So if we have a list discharge, and one of the things that DPC is trying to do is make the public aware, if you see something in a catch basin, report it to the village, to the high rate department, to the police, and then we would investigate. Like if we see something and it says, you know, talent Ramalho and it's sitting in our catch basin, we're gonna call the DPC and say Ramalho is not doing what it's supposed to be doing. They're supposed to be inspecting their discharge or their interconnection into probably Clarkstown and then Clarkstown into Orange Town, then Orange Town to us. So we're the last one in the line. We just have to be, we careful what we discharge into the Hudson, which is ours. So there are different procedures and regulations that CDC wants us to do. They wanna know what we're doing about it. For example, you're required to clean the streets twice a year. We clean it like once a week. So we're way ahead of most municipalities on what we're doing to make the state, make the water cleaner. Way ahead, believe me. We get together at these meetings. Piermont, we're way ahead. And I meant to bring, we actually won some awards. I was gonna present to the mayor. I forgot to bring them. We won four awards uh, last year for our, how, how well we are doing on this MS four. Which is nice, you know, to give you a little, what you can stick on the wall and you want to see. Uh, and that's basically it. Where, as I said, it's, it's continually evolve, evolving. Whereas like one of the big things we have to do within three years, the nearest state Department of Environmental Conservation wants an entire mapping of every pipe and catch basin in the entire village. Now, we know where they all are, but they just don't want the locations. They want the size of every pipe, the pitch of every pipe, the size of every catch basin. And I know the previous engineer prior to myself was working on that. And we have to find out the status, because I, I believe we have three more years to complete that. And they, because they want it in the entire state. They wanna know where everything goes from and to in the entire state of New York. Any, excuse, anything that eventually discharges into a state water body. In our case, Sparkville Creek and Hudson River, obviously there was a water bodies across the state where other municipalities discharged. Uh, and that, that's basically it. We're, we're, we're set. We will be, we will be, uh, I will be submitting prior to April first, so we will not get a big fine. For example, Spray Valley is up to three hundred something thousand dollars in fines. And they finally have somebody to do it, but he even said at the last meeting, he's, he's lost. It's very, very confusing. Okay, that's why I said Cornell Quack and Extension is helping us. Still confusing him to help up and getting through it. And I stay a little ahead of it, so we shouldn't have any issues.
All right, is that, that report that you have, is it possible for us, for those who are interested, can we download that to the, uh, website?
Sure, it, it, Jennifer can do it. She has it on the computer. We can put everything. I guess we can put everything I wanna say. We'll put them all. The, the, well, we can, I'll show you, I'll show you. The annual report, that's the April first. I did preliminary, you can put that in there. And then after April first, when I do the final, we'll put that one in there. Obviously, as you remember, you have to sign the certification when the final goes in. Yeah, we, the state, again, I don't know why so long, five years from now, it all has to be online. Right now, we just have to have it, but very shortly, we'll have both online. We'll have a, we'll have a binder in the office and we'll have everything online, because it's, we have all the documents. We just have to download it onto a site or a link on the site and then they can go. You can see all the documents.
Right, right. Okay, yeah, I think that would be big help for people who are interested to see it. I know it's very complicated and.
Yeah.
Crazy, but thanks.
Worst thing I did, a lot of stuff in my career, it's the worst thing. Or at least performed whatever happened.
Right, right, right. All right, thank you for that. Any questions? Oh, oh, okay. Yeah, thank you, bud. Thank you. Okay, Alexa Stark?
Alexa, start eight fifty, current on half a day. So just kind of going back to my public comments, should this MS four document cover, you know, these issues with clearcutting on construction sites and lack of barriers to prevent erosion on the construction sites?
Yeah, just one last. Yeah, so the way a construction site works is we have our Piermont regulations, and we have the state regulations. And they do intertwine, and I'll explain. If there's, and it all comes down to disturbance. When you do a construction project, you're disturbing a certain amount of ground. If you disturb one acre of water, you're required by New York State to do what's called a Stormwater Pollution Protection Plan, SWIP. It's a long comprehensive document that then the state has to approve. We've only had two in like the last five years. The Wright House that's completed and two of the houses up on Tweed. The project can be getting here. And neither of those projects are going, are going headway now. On projects smaller than that, Piermont has its own regulations. So you're required to do a site plan if it's required by the project, and the site plan gets reviewed by the village engineer, which is myself. And there'll be certain regulations required. For example, so picture, if you're not on a flat piece of property, you're on a slope, the downside of the slope, there must be erosion protection. So required it, and typically it's called a silt fence with reinforcement, if it's a normal building, a house or something. Which means when it rains, because when they're constructing, nothing's gonna happen. It's when it rains, water's flowing, and the water's taking sediment with it. We don't want the sediment to leave the property. So we put a silt fence up. And the silt fence will catch anything, so it won't get into, so it will not get onto the streets, onto other people's property, and importantly, into the drainage system. You know, silt in the drainage system is not the end of the war, because it's natural, it's clean, but there's always stuff mixed in on a construction site. There's construction materials, cuttings, there might be a leak from machinery. So we do have these barriers in place on small projects. Now, to take aside from that, also on a construction project, Piermont is what's called a zero net runoff requirement on all construction projects, which is a complicated way of saying, when it rains, the water percolates into the ground. So everybody that owns property starts at a zero point. We don't count the house that's there now. If you were building a new house on a vacant piece of land, a hundred percent of that property absorbs the water when it rains. Now you put a house in, which zero absorbs, because there's a house there. The drywall, zero. The sidewalk, zero. Anything that covers the property that's not pervious counts as zero. So now, which before you had a hundred percent, now maybe you have sixty percent, and you covered the property with forty percent of impervious surface. You now have to run calculations on how you're going to keep that amount of water on your property until it has time to percolate into the soil. And then, you know, they have to run soil tests to see how fast does it actually percolate. The slower the percolation, the bigger the tanking system or the drainage system. It's called retention or detention, depending on the drainage. How long that has to stay, and usually done with underground tanks. So that's all done to keep water from going off someone's property, and that is going into the future. The silt fence and stuff is only during construction. Once construction's done, and they plant their grass, hopefully you're okay. So that's how a construction site works for us, for the MS four, to keep stuff out of the drainage system. But it's also, the Piermont regulations, it's to prevent flooding or additional flooding. We don't wanna make anything worse. And it prevents discharge going into neighboring properties during a construction project. Just an additional note, I got a call from one of the neighbors up there last week. They were all having rain. She wanted to know why the water wasn't running through a property anymore. It's because that property constructed the silt fence, put the hay bales up, has a collection system before, goes into the storm drain that they clean every day. And now the property is catching all the water into the storm drain like it should have been. In the past, we've had major flooding over in Foxnes, and it was running through the bracket, down the rail trail, and then running down the rail trail. So she actually called me and said, "What happened to all the water?" And wanted me to look at the pipe, and I said, "They're actually catching the water on site. They did temporary irrigation system to run it all to the catch basin." So it's actually working the way it's supposed to work while they're built. And they've actually lessened the amount of water that's coming off the mound already during the construction. Which sometimes is an issue, I'll explain to you. In Charlotte's Bay, we're collecting a hundred percent of the water. When that job's done, some water is now gonna go back to the neighbor. She'll say, "Well, there's water, but no more than there was before." Or less. It probably be less.
Apparently, there is a point a couple of weeks ago when there was no silt fence, surveillance up, and there is rain event, and all the erosion went into 9W, and the workers were out there scooping it out.
Well, they scooped, right. And what happened was, they put up a safety fence. They put up their safety fence. I called the contractors right away when that happened. I said, "What happened, guys?" They said, "We couldn't get silt fence." I said, "Then you gotta stop. You gotta put up a silt fence before you do anything." I said, "That's why you're sweeping, and you're reporting to us, is that all that stuff is intact before the work goes on." So they got it up that, they fixed everything. So, and then, so any other neighbor had said to me, "A little bit came last time, like, whoa." She said, "Now I'm getting nothing." I said, "That's because it's protecting property now."
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor? Because we're not going to...
Yes, playground.
We are? Yeah. All right, so I guess we're moving on, right? Okay. Item number eight. Schedule a public hearing for Piermont Comprehensive Plan on Tuesday, April eighth. This is the public hearing for the Piermont Comprehensive Plan, Tuesday, April eighth. We were originally thinking seven o'clock, I'm calling the day before. We're thinking moving that to seven thirty, because people wanna do the budget thing before that. Give us that good time. So basically, we wanna schedule a public hearing for the Piermont Comprehensive Plan on Tuesday, April eighth, 2025, at seven thirty PM. Will they wanna make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item number nine. Review proposed amendment to local law pilot code and schedule a public hearing. This is in regards to our local law pilot code. We found an inconsistency in the code where one line stated the term "village owned," and the second line of the code did not. We are looking to delete the, this is local law. Amend section two one zero dash six eight point one D nine. The building inspectors shall determine that the supplies available on three parking spaces is equipped. This is also known as commercial staff equipment, so being piled with files. This is, because this is a local law, we do have to schedule a public hearing for this. So why don't we also schedule this then for the next...
Is that a regular meeting?
No, I don't think we should do that, our regular village board meeting, which is the fifteenth. Yeah. And the eighth is not a village board meeting, it's a public hearing for the town plan only. Yeah. So I make a motion to schedule a public hearing to amend the local law pilot code at the meeting on April, what is it, the fifteenth? Fifteenth. I make a motion.
I'll save it.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Item ten. Recommendation from the Piermont Traffic Committee to change the parking spot in front of four fifty three Piermont Avenue, also known as Trattoria del Victoria Restaurant, from fifteen minute parking to a new parking zone. And I believe we have the chair of the traffic committee here.
Paul Kamen, representing the committee. This is your most straightforward item of the night.
Probably.
We're talking about parking space in front of Trattoria, which currently is fifteen minute zone, originally to facilitate takeout orders in downtown restaurants. The reality is that the in and out traffic from that fifteen minute zone, when it is actually being observed, is disruption to a very tricky intersection around that area in the first place. And people, the markings have not been particularly clear either, so the way people park for that is further exacerbating, sorry, the traffic flow. We considered making it a two hour zone, but with consultation with Chief Hurley, we recommend it just be no parking.
Okay. That is, would be a change in the code, in the parking code. We do have to schedule a public hearing for that as well. So why don't we schedule a public hearing on that also for April fifteenth? Somebody wanna make a motion on this one?
Some.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Paul. Okay. Recommendation from the Community Center Committee for the new playground equipment is part of the Rockland County Offland Grand. Stand.
All right. Dan Sherman, representing the Community Center Playground Committee, and chair of the Parks Department. Michael has put together, Michael Way has put together a slideshow that shows the equipment. We were working from a grant that we had, a grant for Hattie Park, and then the upper part as well. We're still working on that. And we did out the play, we put together a design with the committee, and we bid it up to three different qualified, SAM certified companies. And we found one that was offering fifty percent sale ending on March thirty first, so we really need to close in on that. But it kept us within our budget, and I think he can show. The company is the Cernal Giardano Construction, representing short play, Superior Recreation Products. This shows some pictures of the old rotten playground. And so now, we are with this sale that really was great. We're able to get a whole new play structure, a new swing set, four benches, two picnic tables, and the safety surface is not part of this, that's a separate. But it'll be laid out roughly like this. The tables might actually be, the benches might be along the sidewalk, so people can sit and look at the river. We'll decide that as the committee, when the materials come in. For the swing set, we'll be replaced, brand new playground. Looks like this. Swing set.
Maybe the swing set also will have a, you know, people with disabilities swing?
Oh, it's an eighty-eight inch swing set. And they were, the company was very compliant in coordinating colors, and the committee spent hours talking about exactly what color it is. She gave so many options, and it's all...
Dan, weren't they gonna keep the existing swing set?
That was my instructions.
No.
The center, the center, the back leg of the center was completely sawn through somehow.
I thought they were gonna repair it.
A famous intent, so.
I thought originally they were gonna fix it. I thought they were gonna sweep it and just weld the pieces to there, so that was...
So this equipment, all comes in forty-six thousand dollars. So the sale comes at the end of March, and so we need to vote to approve the purchase of this, that it can be purchased, so it'll be in this month, if not next month. So we're kind of out of the way, but it's a very good deal for all this stuff. That's an estimate for the play surface, and I think it's an estimated. And the installation is a hard number. And it's still off all the different grants that the building's supposed to.
Right.
Well, in addition to the grant, there was thirty thousand from the veterans.
Right, right. Right, so we scored a thousand on the grants and the town, and a thirty thousand dollar donation from the veterans.
And all of this building's, I think, about eighteen thousand. And if that really works out to be the case, I'd recommend that we replace that same. That is long the parking, it's all broken and worn in.
Right, right. Okay. All right.
This needs a vote. This needs a vote.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Community Center Committee for the new playground equipment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Dan.
Yeah.
Would be a nice addition to the book. Okay. Item twelve. Review tax assessor consultant twenty twenty-five grievance recommendations. So this reads as follows. For property location five forty-nine Piermont Avenue, Piermont, New York, the tentative assessed value of four hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred and seventy for this property has been reduced to an assessed value of four hundred and twenty-five thousand. Does everyone concur?
Concur.
Today's the eleventh? Property location two one two De Bree's Court, Piermont, New York, the tentative assessed value of seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars for this property has been reduced to an assessed value of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Does everybody concur?
Concur.
Property location one forty-two Hudson Terrace, Piermont, New York, the tentative assessed value of nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for this property has not been reduced. Does everybody concur?
Concur.
Yes.
Property location thirty-two Oak Street, Piermont, New York, the tentative assessed value of four hundred and twenty-four thousand four hundred dollars for this property has been reduced to an assessed value of four hundred thousand dollars even. Does everybody concur?
Concur.
Property location eight fifty Piermont Avenue, Piermont, New York, the tentative assessed value of one million seven hundred thousand dollars for this property has been reduced to an assessed value of one million six hundred thousand dollars. Does everybody concur?
Concur.
Property location two oh nine Harbor Cove, Piermont, New York, the tentative assessed value of four hundred fifty thousand dollars for this property has been reduced to an assessed value of four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Does everybody concur?
Concur.
Property location fifty-nine Harbor Cove, Piermont, New York, the tentative assessed value of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this property has not been reduced. Does everybody concur?
Concur.
Property location one dash ten Groundhouse Road, Piermont, New York, the tentative assessed value of three billion six hundred and eighteen thousand six hundred dollars for this property has not been reduced. Does everybody concur?
Concur.
Property location two hundred Ash Street, Piermont, New York, the tentative assessed value of two million dollars for this property has not been reduced. Does everybody concur?
Concur.
Property location four eighty-five Main Street, Piermont, New York, the tentative assessed value of one million one hundred thousand dollars for this property... The tentative assessed value of one million one hundred thousand dollars for this property has not been reduced. Does everybody concur?
Concur.
Finally, the property location four oh six Piermont Avenue. The tentative assessed value of eight hundred and nineteen thousand dollars for this property has been reduced to an assessed value of seven hundred and eighty-five thousand two hundred. Does everybody concur?
Concur.
Thank you. Okay, item thirteen. Review Blue Shore Engineering Project Plan for the Piermont Pier Reconstruction. I believe Dan Gobler could not be here tonight.
Right, Dan Gobler sent me an email, a short while ago, that we have to lose the fire training center tonight. And he wanted to let the board know that he is waiting for a proposal from North River Contractors for a price on the proposed plans that Blue Shore gave to the village. And he also sent a copy of the plans to the D E C, the Army Corps, and the Riverkeeper so they can look at them to see if they have any input. So right now, what we had, which I did contribute to the board, is the Piermont Pier Reconstruction Plans from Blue Shore. So do you want to move this to the next agenda?
Yeah, yeah, a little bit ahead, I know Sam's trying to get some grants for this. So, yeah. Okay, item number fourteen. Appointment of Mary Kirby as member of the Piermont Dining Board to fulfill the unexpired term of head delusion. I made this motion to accept the appointment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, along with that, the appointment of J C Raymondo as volunteer to the dining board to fulfill the unexpired term of Mary Kirby. I make a motion to appoint.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we have item sixteen. Request from Katie Steckler, owner of a piece of Piermont with a bench outside of four fifty-eight Piermont Avenue. Katie here?
I don't think she's here. Um, she's not here, and they have extra door and, so we'll just have to, I guess, wait for her to come in.
Okay. Item seventeen. Request from the Grand Fondo, New York, to hold their annual bike event on Sunday, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Gee, do you want to think about this?
Mary, you're going to be doing the same amount as last year, we'll be saying, I can't help you.
Okay.
So it's a minimal, bad hour for us, it's a lot less to help than it would be.
So we have to come through, right?
They come through correctly. If they use the app, I'll be nine AM, if they hit nine thirty, they're through.
Okay, Dan. I make a motion to approve Grand Fondo.
I say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, review request from Prata on the River LLC at seven oh one Piermont Avenue to waive the thirty day advance notice to the municipality for a liquor license. I guess they already have a license, but this is for the sand area. Renovation for sand area at the apple location. I think it's very standard, we could just, uh, someone want to make a motion?
Dan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah. And item nineteen. Review letter from T-Mobile regarding notice to perform maintenance work installing, upgrading equipment. So, you know, want to comment on this?
Note that T-Mobile came to me the other day, they're not going to go ahead and put any new buildings if they have structural improvements. So they're going to stay out of each fire this hour or lots. They're taking down three assignments, they only need two now with the upgrades, so that's what they're going to do.
Okay, I'm going to need to go on that, but it's pretty. Yeah, so T-Mobile, which is a wireless carrier, they rent space from the village on the Siren Tower. And they pay the village rent for that. And they, they were considering moving, taking, moving from the tower to a private residence, correct? By private, you have been, they decided to stay with the tower and upgrade their equipment there so we can continue to get income from T-Mobile for the rental on that. I believe that is it. I'd like to thank Kyle Wise again for building, for getting the message out. Thank you, Kyle. And, so, in a moment. I'm sure. Yeah, 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 so, so on April eighth, again, seven thirty is going to be the public hearing for the town plan. And, but before that, there'll also be a public, a meeting of the board to, to go over the new budget. That'll be noticed as well. You'll start at five thirty? That's good, okay. Very cool. All right, so, yeah, so we'll do that at five thirty. So five, equally, five thirty, budget meeting, seven thirty, public hearing for the town plan. Thank you, everyone, for coming today. Appreciate it, thank you.